All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this village board meeting to order on Tuesday, February 18, 2025, and ask you if you would all please rise and join the village board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Trustee Schwingback. Trustee Shirley.
Here.
Trustee Bertucci.
Here.
Trustee Grassi. Trustee Tenalia.
Here.
Trustee Dunnington.
Here.
Trustee Baldino.
Here.
Trustee Labads.
Here.
President Hayes.
Here.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have two sets to approve tonight. The first is from our village board meeting on February 3, 2025. Any changes or passes? If not, an entertaining motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second?
Motion to approve by trustee Baldino, seconded by trustee Labads. Anything else from the board? Anything from the audience saying none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed. And next, our joint village library meeting minutes, joint village and library meeting minutes on February 8, 2025. Any changes or passes?
Passes.
Passed by trustee Baldino.
Passes.
Passed by trustee Shirley.
Move to up here. Second?
Motion to approve by trustee Dunnington, seconded by trustee Labads. Anything from the board or the audience saying none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And next, we move on to the approval of the accounts payable, and I'll call in trustee Bertucci.
Mayor, I'll move approval of the warrant register for the check date February 15, 2025, in the amount of $2,929,196.84.
Second?
Motion by trustee Bertucci, seconded by trustee Baldino. Questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
President Hayes.
Yes. Well, under recognitions and communications, we do have a presentation this evening, and to introduce that topic, I'll turn it over to our village manager, Randy Recklaus.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, in December, we had an incident where Groot garbage truck caught on fire and then exploded. The explosion did injure a couple of our public safety first responders, but thankfully, no one was seriously injured. However, this incident was something that really caught a lot of people's attention because of the damage that it did to neighboring buildings and the potential life-threatening, you know, explosion that occurred. So, tonight, Chief Harris is going to be giving an update on that incident, going to provide our analysis that we've done and report on some of the discussions we've had with Groot on some of the lessons that we've learned from that incident to benefit the public. So, with that, I'll turn things over to Chief Harris.
Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Hayes and trustees. Before I get started, I just want to introduce some of the command staff that's here with us tonight. I have Deputy Chief Bankard, who was the actual incident commander on this incident on December 6. He was battalion chief at the time and has recently been promoted, as you're well aware of. And I have Division Chief Dave Roberts with us tonight, who's in charge of our community risk reduction division. I think it's very important that I make it very clear, as we get started tonight, this is an internal review. We will not be discussing anything that goes along with the investigation, as the investigation is still an open investigation on Groot's side. So, we will not be disclosing anything to do with the investigation tonight. Some of the objectives that we're hoping to cover tonight is just general information on CNG trucks, provide information on where we see CNG vehicles across the village streets on a daily basis, provide detailed information on the fire and explosion, and provide information on what actions the fire department is taking to safeguard the village and its residents. Why do we see compressed natural gas on the street? It's made up of methane, and it burns cleaner than the gasoline or diesel vehicles, and CNG is considered a more environmentally friendly alternative traditional fuels. What do we know about CNG? It's lighter than air, it's non-toxic, it's odorless, it's tasteless, and as we know, it's flammable. Just like our natural gas, how do we detect a leak on a CNG vehicle? There's an odorant called mercaptan that's added to the gas to make it able for us to smell so we can detect if there is a leak. On our roadways here in the village, on a daily basis, we have CNG vehicles throughout the village. We find them in our garbage trucks, who are in town five days a week, collecting our waste, our public transportation, industrial vehicles such as cement trucks, box trucks making deliveries, and personal vehicles. Groot is the village's contracted waste hauler. Groot's been operating in the village for a long time. They've been operating CNG vehicles in our community since 2010. Their fleet of vehicles that is located in Elk Grove Village, it serves us here in town, is made up of 165 vehicles. 115 of those vehicles run on CNG, and 50 run on diesel. In our communications with them, they chose CNG because it's lower environmental noise and pollution, maintenance costs, and fuel costs. Why CNG versus diesel? CNG-powered trucks emit 80% less pollution than their diesel counterparts. So, this particular truck here is a picture of the same truck that we had a fire in on December 6. What I'm trying to point out to you, as you see the arrow up at the top, that's where the CNG cylinders are stored. They, as a picture on the right shows, those are the exact same cylinders that were on this truck. They're made of a plastic liner that is overwrapped with a composite winding of carbon fiber. On the particular truck that we're looking at here, these cylinders sat from side to side, starting at the opening where the bucket dumps into the trash compactor to the back of the vehicle. I want you to take particular close attention to this picture here. You see the five openings as you go down the side. That is where the PRDs are located in those openings, along with the vent release valve that I'm going to talk about a little bit later. But when I'm talking about that, when I'm talking about the PRDs, the PRDs are in those openings, those three-inch round openings on the top of this particular truck. I want you to also see that this is the curb side, or the street side. On the curb side, there is the exact same five openings, so there's 10 PRDs located on this particular garbage truck. CNG cylinders can be mounted in a variety of locations on these trucks. As you can see, they have roof-mounted systems, they have front-body mount systems, they have tailgate systems, and then they have the side-mounted where you would see a normal diesel tank. As you can see on these trucks, the diamond, the blue diamond with the CNG is how we are able to tell. That's the marking. There'll be one on the rear and one on the front bumper. So, when these things are on fire, or they're dirty, it's hard to see. That's the diamond with the CNG decal that we look for. And also, on some of Groot's trucks, on the side of the hopper, it'll say powered by natural gas. So, it isn't on all of them, but it's on some of them. But that's how we identify if it's a compressed natural gas truck. There's three types of garbage truck fires. We have had multiple conversations with Groot since the December 6 incident. There's really two types, but we threw the third one in there because it has happened. There's really a cabin chassis fire, which you see on the left, or a load fire, or the trash fire you see on the right. One of the biggest misconceptions that I've had people ask me since we had this explosion, do CNG vehicles always explode if they catch on fire? That is false. I can tell you, and I will tell you later, we've had since 2017, six garbage truck fires here in the village, two load fires, I think three load fires, and three chassis fires. So, this department was prepared for this event when it happened. The explosion is not normal behavior of a CNG storage system during a fire. The fuel container components could rupture due to physical damage from an accident, or if the pressure relief devices that I talked about a little bit earlier fail to operate. Okay, pressure relief devices. I showed you on the previous picture, there's five on each side of the truck inside those three little holes that I was talking about. Those pressure relief devices are supposed to go off between 212 and 220 degrees. The trash compactor on this truck is eight by eight. I'll give you a comparison. If a 10 by 10 room in your house is fully involved in flames, it's 1,000-plus degrees at the ceiling. Okay? So, we showed up and had flames shooting out the top of this truck. You don't have to know anything about fire behavior or anything to know that it was over 212 degrees. These are designed to release the product to help to prevent an explosion. That's what the pressure relief device does. They should go off in two to five minutes, depending on the amount of fire and how intense the fire is. Once this pressure relief valve opens, it remains open. It will never close. The picture on the right is what we would be looking for if we showed up on a garbage truck fire today. We'd be listening for a loud hissing noise. We'd be listening for a high-pressure stream of gas that would be venting, and you can see where it says PRD vent. You can see that it's venting to the sky, to a safe location, and it's on fire. These things can catch on fire, they can go out, and they can catch on fire and go out multiple times. It'll continue to burn under high pressure until all five of the cylinders have released. And it's only one PRD that has to go off, and it will drain all five of the cylinders on these trucks. They're all daisy-chained together, and only it takes one pressure relief valve to go off, and once one goes off, it will never close. If the PRD does not operate, the pressure will continue to build, the cylinder can fail, and an explosion can occur. The picture you see there is an explosion of one of the CNG cylinders after it exploded. These cylinders are designed to only withstand fire for eight to 10 minutes. They will fail in eight to 10 minutes if they're in fire. So, it's very important that these PRDs go off, and they release the pressure so that the pressure can't build, and we would have an explosion. Three different styles of trucks here, where you can see the PRDs are designed to vent upward into a safe atmosphere. Again, we'd be listening for that loud hissing noise or a stream of fire if one of them goes off. But this is just an indication of which way they're pointed on these specific trucks. I've been asked multiple times since December 6, was Arlington Heights Fire Department prepared for this to happen? I can tell you, we have a very robust training division led by Division Chief Strohny. In October, or I'm sorry, in February of this year, Division Chief Strohny put out a training. Here's some of the slides from the PowerPoint training discussing compressed natural gas fires. Every member of our organization went through this training and had to sign off on it. Why did we do this? Because we'd had five previous events. It was on our radar. We wanted to make sure we knew when the PRDs released. We wanted to know, make sure they knew what pressures they release at, and where they should be venting, and how we identify it's a compressed natural gas truck. So, every member of the organization went through this training in February of 2024. The picture on the left is a picture that we've had of a recent, one of the five previous fires I talked about, where in best-case scenario, anytime we have a garbage truck on fire, they dump their load on the street. It's business as usual. We put the fire out, Groot comes in, they clean it up, you don't even know it was there. That's the best-case scenario, and that has happened multiple times here in the village. So, I wanted to just go through a recap of December 6. I'll start off with, it was a sunny afternoon, a Friday afternoon, about 4 o'clock. It was about 32 degrees, 33 degrees out. The wind direction was south-southwest at about 12 mile an hour. So, the wind and the weather really played no factor in this event. Here's the timeline from the first call to Northwest Central Dispatch from the driver of the fire, of the garbage truck. Let's build up to this timeline. We know that this garbage truck was in town, did its garbage route in the morning, went to the transfer station over lunch, emptied his load. That's the key to this whole thing right here. Emptied his load successfully, returned to Arlington Heights about 1 o'clock in the afternoon to do his recycle pickup. You can see in this timeline, four minutes and 10 seconds after Engine 2 arrived on the scene, along with Battalion 2, or Battalion 1, Squad 2, and myself, this garbage truck blew up, four minutes and 10 seconds after we were there. I arrived right behind the battalion chief, and I'll give you a quick review of my steps to show you how quick four minutes and 10 seconds go by. I met with the battalion at Derbyshire in Euclid. He asked me to go down to Dryden and come around and park on the south end so that we could stop traffic. We knew we had a school to the south of us. We didn't want anybody walking up. I parked my car at Derbyshire in St. James, about 110 yards away. I saw flames shooting out the top of the compactor of the truck as I'm looking at it, straight to the north. I walked down the sidewalk, walked up as close to the houses as I could, because I'm supposed to get over to Euclid, where the battalion chief's car is, and that's where I'm supposed to go. I met battalion chief Bankard and the lieutenant at the corner of a house, and we stood there for 19 seconds, and this truck blew up. That's how quick four minutes and 10 seconds goes by. Engine 2 officer, a very experienced officer, a very good officer, when he arrived on the scene, he had smoke showing, he had flames coming out the top of the truck. He went right to the driver. He asked the driver, can you dump the load? Most important thing of that, the most important question, can you dump the load? Because if we dump the load, and we get the load on the street, we have no problem with compressed natural gas cylinders potentially blowing up. The driver tried to dump the load, was unable to dump the load. A hose line was deployed with the tactic of just lobbing some water up into the top of the truck, knowing, we trained on this, not to put water on a compressed natural gas cylinder. It's not a good recommendation, not something we could do, and we were just lobbing water up into there. The battalion chief and myself were talking with the lieutenant on what our next steps were going to be, because we had fires shooting four or five feet up in the air. We knew we had a problem because it was a compressed natural gas truck, and we couldn't get the load off. And as we were having that conversation, the truck blew up. After that, we went into injuries. The first thing we did was check ourselves. We checked the police officers and the other four firemen on the scene. I'm here to tell you, I'm blessed to be standing here tonight, and the same thing to have battalion chief Bankard sitting here. And the other three firemen and the other two police officers going home is a miracle. And it's also a miracle that we didn't hurt any of our citizens on this explosion. We took care of the injured. We started working with the police department to check the four houses that were immediately adjacent to this explosion, to make sure none of our residents were hurt. And we started working with the police department on a gas leak and other injuries, potential injuries in the homes. What have we done since we've learned, since this has happened? We've met with Groot multiple times. I think the biggest thing that we need to take away from this, we can't prove it, but there's a very high suspicion that this fire was started because the improper disposal of a lithium-ion battery in a recycling bin. The amount of fire and the amount of heat that we had that day indicates that it was a lithium-ion battery, because when a lithium-ion battery goes into thermal runaway, it's burning at around 750 degrees, and this fire grew rapidly. So, you know something was fueling it. What are the takeaways from this, and what is the Arlington Heights Fire Department going to do different? And as I said, we've met with Groot multiple times. Groot isn't here tonight because of pending litigation. They wanted to be here, but were told they couldn't be here. They wanted to be here to support the fire department in the village, because they've been very upfront, working with us, meeting with us, and setting our new standards on how we're going to move forward. So, some of the things that we're doing to move forward, we've created safe parking distances. We're determining best tactical practice. I can tell you what Groot did prior to this, is when they noticed they have a fire in their truck, they would pull off onto a roadway or a parking lot. They would compress the load, and there's a big arm in this, a big, it's like a wall that squeezes the load together, and what that does is it takes the oxygen away from the fire. And a lot of times, the fire goes out when they do that, because they compress this load. When he compressed this load, when he compressed this load, some plastics and some paper went underneath this slide bar. Now, we had a fire behind the slide bar, and that's what just kept going, and then it set the other part of the load on fire. And like I said, we had fire three to four feet coming out the top of the compactor. So, what are we doing now if this is to happen today? We're going to approach it and see what tactical considerations we have. If it's just a smoldering fire because they've squeezed it, we can potentially put it out. If we have a situation where we have fire coming through or coming out of the compactor like we had that day, we're going to stay 300 feet away. We're going to set up a command post with the police department, immediately deploy the police department's drone above this truck so that we can watch it and make sure that it's venting. We're going to evacuate 300-foot radius in all four directions. The police supervisor will release an immediate public service announcement from the scene with accurate information to avoid the incident. We will deploy hose lines to protect any structures. We're going to continue to develop an updated detail of operational guidelines for CNG fires. We're coordinating with Northwest Central Dispatch and Groot. One of the things that is changed in Groot's standard operating procedures moving forward, if they have a fire in their truck, the first thing they will do is dump the load. They will not try and compact it, they will not try and do anything, because they have realized if the fire is on the street and the compressed natural gas is not in play, it's the best-case scenario for all of us, and to make us all safe. They're also training their drivers to notify the dispatch center they're calling, that it's a compressed natural gas truck, so that the dispatch center can relay that to the crews responding, where the fire location is. Is it a load fire that's dumped on the street? Is it a load fire that's in the truck still? Or is it a chassis fire? A lot of their chassis fires are started by broken hydraulic or oil lines that drop onto the manifold of the engine or onto the motor and start that way. Those are how the chassis fires are working and starting. And we're constantly keeping our fire department members up to date on new information discovered on this topic. In February of 2024, the Los Angeles Fire Department had a very similar garbage truck explosion that critically injured three firemen and injured six others. We have been in constant contact with them, talking about lessons learned and comparing notes, and trying to figure out the best tactical procedures moving forward. So, I think the biggest takeaway on what has changed from the Arlington Heights Fire Department perspective is when we pull up on the scene now, if we have a load fire or a chassis fire, we are going to let the truck burn. That's Groot's recommendation. That's the best recommendation from the compressed natural gas cylinder makers, is to let the truck burn, and that's what we will be doing unless we can get there and put the load fire out that's just smoldering. So, that's the end of my incident review, but while I have your attention, there's some quick information on safe and proper disposal of batteries that I'd like to share with you. As I mentioned, this fire, we strongly believe was started by the improper disposal of a lithium-ion battery into a recycling bin. Some of these numbers up here are pretty startling. 20,000 fires caused each year in the USA by the improper disposal of batteries or by batteries. The batteries in themselves, when disposed of into regular garbage or recycle containers because of their higher flammable nature, are the number-one cause of some of these fires. We can't throw these batteries into our recycling bins. Today was not done intentionally, and village manager Reckless picked this day. Today is National Battery Day. We did not know that until Diana informed us of it after we had set this date for presentation. But when they are used up and damaged or no longer usable, please do not throw them into the regular trash. Provides an extreme risk to our workers and to the environment. Batteries, when they're damaged, can explode or ignite, and when their pressure is placed on them in the back of a compactor or a garbage truck, this is what causes fires. When we were talking to Groot, they have a fire a week in one of these trucks, and they think most of them are caused by lithium-ion batteries. So, Chief Harris, what should we do with our batteries? There is a new Senate bill passed, Senate Bill 3686, that will go into effect in 2026. So, that doesn't do us any good right now. So, what we can do today is we can utilize the approved battery recycling centers that are up here on the board. Village Hall, Health and Human Services will accept any rechargeable battery. Best Buy right here in town accepts rechargeable batteries in electronics, and Home Depot in Mount Prospect will accept nearly all styles of batteries that are non-automotive. You can also go to this website, put your location in, and it will tell you where the closest recycling center is for your batteries when you go to this site. I thank you for the opportunity to present. Before I answer any questions, Deputy Chief Bankard, is there anything that I didn't add that you would like to add? Okay. Well, that's the end of my presentation, and I'm glad to take any questions at this time.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Randy, did you have anything?
Mayor, I did want to just note, I want to commend Chief Harris and his entire team on both the response to this incident and the conscientious way with which they reviewed this incident with Groot. I can tell you that they took this very seriously. They, obviously, the department was trained for this type of event. They engaged in best practices during the event. They took care of our residents after the event, and, you know, obviously, after an event like this, we can refine our best practices to optimize them even further. But, you know, the one thing that we learned is had either the driver been successful in unloading their garbage on the street, or if those release valves had activated, if either of those incidents would have occurred, then we wouldn't be here talking about this, because the vehicle wouldn't have exploded. And so, it's still very much an incident we all can learn from, and we're sharing our knowledge with surrounding departments as well.
Right. Well, thanks, Randy. I was going to echo those comments as well. Thank you, Chief, for the very informative presentation. Unfortunately, incidents like this do occur in our village and elsewhere, and the important thing is, do you learn from it? And I think the presentation that you gave us tonight really focused on lessons learned and how we can perhaps prevent this, or at least minimize the damage if it does occur. And so, I was there, as you know, probably an hour and a half or so after the incident occurred. I stood right where you and the other guy stood, and it's really a testament, not just to your training, but also, I think, to the grace of God, that you're still standing here. You guys are still standing here, having seen how close you were to the explosion, and we're just so fortunate that no one was seriously hurt and very little property damage based on... based on what could have happened. And so we very much appreciate the training that you did in advance to help minimize the effects, the adverse impacts of this. But most importantly, your analysis, as you've explained here this evening, and your focus on the lessons learned, not just for us, our public, yourselves as public safety personnel, but for other communities as well and for Groot, for the garbage haulers. And so I think sometimes good things come out of bad things. And so I think that's what happened here. And so we're very much looking forward to continuing to implement good practices as a result of this bad incident. So again, thank you for your presentation and and fine analysis. So other questions or comments from the board? Trustee Bertucci?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just echo Chief Harris, the professionalism of not only our firefighters, but also of the top brass, so to speak, and and what you guys did and and what you're doing going forward as far as how do we prevent these things? So I commend you guys. You guys were there. You could see by the numbers, you guys were there quickly, reacted quickly. It appears that we really have a job of, whether this board, our village staff, of educating our residents in the way they dispose of batteries, that type of thing. So it will be good to to start to educate people more. I know we do already, as Randy knows, we have events, so on and so forth. But it appears it's one of those things in life where you're never gonna get a hundred percent participation. And we are not perfect people. And so we almost have to go with that in our in our minds and say, that's the case. We're not perfect people. I certainly am am not. And that these things are gonna happen, batteries are gonna get, and let's reduce it. But at the same time, how do we educate and and prevent? It seemed in addition, it it the I was astounded by, because I was doing some reading, and I I saw that many trucks have been fires have have happened. We've, you know, a fire a week, like you mentioned. And that just goes to the the extent. I I guess I I'm, I don't I don't want to say this to throw Groot under the bus, but I'm somewhat disappointed that they're not here. And I get the legal thing. I mean, I understand, you know, that that there's stuff going on and and, you know, and they're concerned or whatever. I mean, but at least, you know, they could show up and say, well, we're not, you know, we can't comment or whatever. So I have some concerns, some concerns there because I had some questions that I would have liked to have asked. But the I think going forward, the only other thing that I would throw out there for future consideration of our garbage haulers would be safety records. You know, that's certainly something that we were gonna want to consider is when I say that not only truck maintenance, because if the driver couldn't dump or wasn't educated to dump quicker, you know, so we don't know. Did we have a truck mechanism failure? Did we have a driver who waited too long before he tried to dump? I don't know. I'm just asking questions. That's what my job is, ask questions and try to find out. So I think that would be something that we would want to look at going forward. And and then again, like I've mentioned, and and like you had mentioned, Chief, that it would be educating the the general public. So that's all I have, Mayor, at this time.
Okay, other questions? Trustee Shirley?
Just real quick, Lance. So in my understanding, there was ten PRDs on this truck.
There was, there's five on.
Two per tank, one on each end of each tank.
One per tank, five on each side, because there was five tanks. There's a PRD on each side. They call it curb side or street side. And where the flames were were coming out of this compactor, talking with Deputy Chief Bankard and myself, the flames were shooting three or four feet in the air within two feet of the front two PRDs.
Okay. So so not all ten or whatever, however many there were necessarily exceeded the temperature. Right? So so the further they were away from the hopper, they might not have gotten up to two twelve, to two, whatever it is. Right? So if there was failure of the PRDs, it might have just been on the front or closest.
Well, we did have, we did have fire on the back end of the hopper as well. There's an opening in our discussions with Groot. There's an opening. And across the entire top of of the hopper, we had flames on the back end, too. So it is our belief that, you know, none of the PRDs operated, and there was plenty of heat that was well over two hundred and twelve degrees.
Okay. Do PRDs expire?
That would be a question for Groot. I I don't know if they'd expire.
Can they be tested? Do we know?
That's another question for P. That's why we wanted Groot to be here tonight.
So I know, and maybe Chris can help, but I mean, I know that, like, Public Works trucks go through, like, CDL, I think, safety inspections from the state periodically. I don't know if it's annual. I can't remember exactly. But do we know if if the PRDs get inspected periodically by any governing regulatory agency or anything like that? Do we know? I mean, these are CDL vehicles, so they probably have to go through a safety inspection, I'm guessing. But I'm just curious about the actual PRDs, whether or not they're periodically, well, whatever, I don't know, inspected or something.
Mr. Eklund?
I was just gonna say, Trustee Shirley, you know, we're happy to reach out to our contacts at Groot. These are great questions, along with any other questions that you all have tonight. We'll certainly pass those along and and share what with you what we find.
Yeah, because just in the interim, while the thing's being sorted out, it might be nice to know that the vehicles that are on the streets are passing some minimum inspection related to these release devices so that we don't have to, like, worry so much until it gets completely sorted out. So that's that's my only questions and comments. That's all I have.
Okay. Trustee Tenali?
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. So Chief, if 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 I can understand her correctly, we think that the fire may have started from a battery that was improperly disposed of. That that's a conclusion that makes some good sense. The the failure of the system after that, can we narrow it down to a couple of things? Like, for example, the the pressure relief valves didn't operate the way they were supposed to. That's one. The hydraulics were in a position that something melted, and the guy could not, the operator couldn't dump the truck on the street. Is that a second?
Either either a hydraulic line melted or one of the safety sensors wouldn't allow it to. There's there's multiple things in safety sensors that don't allow it to operate. For instance, even if you shut the CNG off, the main off, you can't turn it back on. But there was, yeah, the the failure for it not to be able to to unload the load was was the first one. We 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 did not see or hear any PRDs activated while we were there. So those are two big failures. And and that's why I think Groot has made the change now that they aren't messing around with any trying to compact it if they have a fire or whatever. If they have a fire in one of these trucks in Arlington Heights today or tomorrow, the first thing they're doing is getting off the main thoroughfare, looking for a side street or a parking lot, and they're dumping the load. Once the load is off the truck and there's no fire in the truck, the CNG doesn't come into play any longer.
The explosion portion of it is less likely.
Correct.
So those are two pieces of the puzzle that anybody could ask and think about. Are is there is there a third one? Is there anything else that we're not either thinking about or where? Was that really it?
I think that's it.
It wasn't like operator error or something else like that? It was?
And like I said, he went to the dump, the transfer station at noon, and successfully dumped dumped his load. So the truck was working four hours prior to this explosion.
And if I could, and Chief Harris, correct me if I'm wrong. I think in the exchange, we learned that there was a very good exchange of information between the nine one one dispatcher and the driver. They both said and asked all the right questions and and, you know, created awareness for the first responders on that. And so we're refining. It happened to work out well that time, but we're refining that process to make that really foolproof in the future. But we we don't feel the driver, based on the indications we had, like, you know, did anything improper in terms of calling nine one one or trying to. He followed existing protocols, the best that we can understand.
And I think, you know, one thing I failed to say, that one of the changes we've also made with with Groot is Northwest Central Dispatch. If a truck fire is reported, one of the questions they're asking, is it a compressed natural gas truck? If it's a garbage truck, they're asking, is the load, is it a load fire? Is the load on the truck or has the load been dumped on the street? Because that means a lot to us as we're responding in. One, we know it's a CNG truck. Two, we know that the the load's been dumped on the street. You know, and then we can make our operational decisions from there.
I think the more informed you are upon arrival, the better.
Correct.
Safety wise and so on. So getting back to Trustee Shirley's question on on these relief valves. So however many there are, for however many cylinders there are, I thought I heard you say all it takes is for one to operate and the whole system unloads. Is that is that correct?
That is correct. When one opens, they're daisy chained together, and it drains the entire system. And that that can that can take up to five or six minutes if they're, you know, fully loaded at thirty six hundred PSI. You know, this one in the afternoon had ran its route in the morning and had just completed its route in the afternoon, and he was he was around eighteen hundred PSI. So, you know, if one of those had gone off, it should have fully vented in three or four minutes.
So that's so odd to think about. I mean, based on everything we've just talked about, the fire was so hot. It was, they were right up on top of there, and not one of those valves released.
To our knowledge.
Shaking your head along with me, like, that's really hard to imagine.
From the amount of fire that we saw and knowing, you know, fire behavior and 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 the temperatures, you know, it's an eight by eight compactor. It's an eight by eight compactor. And as I described earlier, a ten by ten room, when it's fully involved in fire at the ceilings, a thousand plus degrees. So if that eight by eight, you know, compactor was fully involved, where we saw flames coming up and out three to five feet.
Would be pretty hot.
It should be pretty hot, and we all know that heat rises.
Yeah. Well, on a on a different subject of this, I know this was this was a an unbelievably scary situation. You and a couple of other guys were standing close enough to this that debris came flying just past you. And I think Mayor Hayes said it really well, but by the grace of God that you're still sitting standing here today. Are you and the rest of the crew okay? I mean, this is something that I know has to affect you and everyone else on the department. You guys all right?
Yeah, we have a peer support team, and we also have a clinical psychologist that some some of the members are are seeing to to deal with the after effects that they're dealing with.
Yeah, it's a lot. And and housewives next door or across the street, there are homes that were damaged, and no one got injured inside the homes, correct?
That is correct.
But was it was it more than one home?
I believe there was four total.
Four total homes. Wow. Well, we sure don't want to see this happen again anytime soon, that's for sure. So thank goodness for what you guys are doing. I sincerely appreciate everything you've done tonight, and I hope the investigation keeps going, and there's plenty to be learned. And I think things will be better because of it. Thanks, Chief.
All right, Trustee LeVens?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. It was very interesting, very thorough. And as others have said, I'm so glad that you all are doing as well as you are and that you have the support that you need to deal with this as you need for any other incident that you would have, that you have to respond to and need to deal with. I do have a couple of questions. The first question has to do with dumping the load. I'm not exactly sure what that means. Does it mean that there's like a trap door at the bottom and they dumped the load? How, I'm not that familiar with a garbage truck.
So at the rear of a garbage truck, there's a big door that just folds open up, and the door, they can just dump the load. Like, when they go to the transfer station, they just open that, and it just dumps out the rear, and then they can pull away. And that's what they do when they dump it on the street. We've had, like I said, six six incidences, and and three of them, the load was dumped on dumped on the street. At that point, it takes the CNG out of it. We're just wetting down a garbage fire. Groot comes out, or sometimes our Public Works Department comes out with a loader, spreads it out. We put it out, and Groot comes and cleans it up, and you don't even know it happened.
Okay, so so it's really the, just the normal part of the truck that actually dumps dumps it out. So, okay, I I understand that better. And the other question I have has to do with batteries. And, you know, I understand about the lithium ion batteries and the rechargeable batteries, how you have to be very, you can't just throw them in the garbage. But what about the alkaline batteries? I used to remember collecting alkaline batteries and taking the alkaline batteries to a collection part place. And then places stopped collecting those. And I, the advice I had heard was you throw those in the garbage. Are those dangerous, too, like these?
It would be our recommendation to not throw any any batteries into the garbage at any point in time. Take them to a recycling center, find somebody that would take them.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that, and I hope that people listening or reading about this will also take that advice, too, because it seemed like that changed over time. So again, thank you very much. I'm so glad you guys are here and doing okay.
Trustee Dunnington?
Thank you. Thank you for that great presentation, Chief Harris, and thank you so much for your leadership. We're so lucky to have the fire department we have in Arlington Heights for your training and all that you do. Mr. Reckless, I wanted to ask about battery collection in Arlington Heights. So we talked about that you can drop off batteries at Village Hall and at the senior center. And so are we working on improving our collection at other locations or dropping off batteries that aren't rechargeable? And I I believe the presentation was that phones are a big problem for fires as well. Just improving our recycling for these kinds of?
We we are, this has generated some discussion, Trustee Dunnington, certainly among staff. And we've had some discussions, too, with the Solid Waste Agency in Northern Cook County about best practices. We are going to, kind of using this presentation as a kickoff. We are going to be putting out more communication over the next few days about what resources there are for people, including within the village, but also other locations that may be more convenient for folks. But we're definitely going to try to do our part to spread the word. And I and I think just to reiterate that point, you know, the lithium ion batteries you're talking about, they're not just, you know, bigger batteries. They're things that are in electric toothbrushes, vape pens, believe it or not, that people just kind of toss out. All of these things can really heat up and most certainly cause a fire. And we don't know what exact kind of appliance may have caused this one. It could have been any of these things. But it's something that we we want to really make sure people understand that they shouldn't be looking at these things casually. These are things that are very hazardous.
And the new law that you mentioned, that starts in twenty twenty six?
Yes, so it doesn't help us today, but there is help coming.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
All right, Trustee Baldino?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you. Very thankful that everybody's okay. You and I talked about that, and we talked about the fact that my house is a block and a half away from where this incident happened. And in over the course of my career, I've had a number of battery fire incidents and a number of compressed gas fire incidents, but never the two combined. I I'm sure, as you know, the fire department is more aware of this than I was. But it just goes to show you that it's it's very difficult to plan for every contingency. And I think the the biggest takeaway, I'm sure that the pressure relief device issue will be investigated, and there will be resolution, and your SOPs will be updated. I think the the biggest takeaway that I hope everybody hears is to not throw batteries away. Because one of the things that's not been mentioned is that that these lithium ion batteries, when they catch on fire, you can't put them out. You just have to let them burn, and they burn very hot. So again, you know, the new law is gonna take effect. We'll have more opportunities to recycle these batteries, but please, don't throw your batteries away in the garbage. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Trustee Baldino. All right, I have no other comments from the board. Thanks again, Chief, and.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to all those who were involved in this incident and the analysis. Very much appreciate it. All right, we have no other recognitions or communications, and so we'll move on then to citizens to be heard. And I have no blue cards from individuals who want to speak on items not on the agenda. Is that right? Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on an item not on the agenda? Yeah, just give it to our village clerk, if you would.
No, it's actually for the fire department. Thank you guys very much.
Um, thank you guys very much.
Well, hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on. All right, um, this is under citizens to be heard, so, um, just to, you know, we have three minute time limit. And this is Philip Bengston, right?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Bengston, go ahead.
I'd like to thank the Fire Department for all their hard work. Myself and neighbors, we're ground zero. It's very much appreciated. We did suffer quite a bit of damage. And there is physical stuff going on with my wife. But we'll get through it. Thank you very much.
Right, thanks, Mr. Bengston. Right, anyone else in the audience on items not on the agenda?
Hi, Bill Meganaro. I live a little ways south on four oh nine South Bristol. I wanted to thank Chief Harris and your team for everything you do every day. Uh, as you said, it is a miracle that no one was killed on December sixth. I also want to thank the board. I was here at the budget discussions last year when the board voted to continue paying ahead on the pensions for our emergency services workers. I believe this is critical that we continue. A lot of us in the village don't think about the risks that our emergency services workers take when they go to work every day. I know that their families do. Should the worst happen, we have a duty to provide for their families. These pensions are critical. Thank you again for what you do every day. Thank you to the board.
All right, Mr. Meganaro, if you just give your card to the village clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience on items not on the agenda? All right, we'll close the consent, we'll close the citizens to be heard portion of the agenda and move on to the consent agenda. Any members of the board wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? I do have a blue card from Mr. Brodeki who wanted to make comment on consent agenda B. So you're going to have to wait one second. So you you are officially requesting that that item be removed from the consent agenda.
I'm requesting it be removed.
You want to make comment?
I just want to make a comment.
Okay, we'll do that after, uh, when we, uh, after the motion. Right? Um, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to request that an item be removed from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the board then. Or, um, is there anyone in the board or entertain a motion to approve the remaining item?
So moved, Mary.
Second.
A motion by Trustee Tenalia, second by Trustee Lebedz. Now, Mr. Brodeki would like to comment on consent agenda B.
Thank you.
And just so the audience knows, consent agenda B is a resolution approving change order number one for the twenty twenty-five pavement rejuvenation or reclamation program. Go ahead.
Thank you. And yes, I am the road diet guy and I'm standing here again, uh, really about that topic because, um, this is a real example of why we need to be looking at road diets and considering them um, in the future when we're doing our road maintenance. So for this one, by my understanding, we're moving a hundred K from one fund into the road maintenance fund because the materials were more expensive than we expected. If we just keep with the status quo repaving the roads as they are, then we're going to end up in this boat every year. So I asked the board to please request that the planning and engineering teams to evaluate road projects and in, uh, with future maintenance in mind and comparing, um, repaving it just as it exists or implementing, uh, road diet tactics. You know, road diets are USDOT recognized method of reducing maintenance cost, especially, uh, when done during regular maintenance projects. And these can mean pedestrian jutouts and islands at intersections or bike lanes. But it can even just mean something as simple as bringing the curb in six inches to a foot on one side. At, uh, just doing these calculations off the top of my, you know, briefly, but at a dollar fourteen per square yard, bringing our, which is what I understand that it costs, uh, the material, bringing our curbs in by a foot would reduce the cost of material by around seven hundred dollars per mile, uh, multiplied by however many miles of roadwork we do every year. And that could be real savings that we're talking about. And every yard of pavement that we remove from the road today is a yard that we don't need to pay for the next time around when prices are even higher. So please, just today I asked you to have our engineering and planning teams evaluate road projects with future costs, uh, comparing expected maintenance costs of keeping the roads the same versus, um, implementing some, uh, road diet on it. And to be transparent and public with the results of those studies. Not only would this make it safer for people using the roads, but it's good fiscal responsibility that can help us from having to raise taxes or siphon funds from other worthy costs like the parks, the library, uh, or our police and firefighters. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Brodeki. Anyone else wants to, uh, comment on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
Trustee Lebedz?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. We'll move on to new business then. We do have two items to consider tonight. The first is an appointment of Alona House to the Performing Arts Metropolis Board of Directors for a term ending February eighteen, twenty twenty-eight. And that, um, motion was made by Trustee Lebedz, so if you'd report that out at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. I move now, as I did earlier, to concur in the mayor's appointment of Alona House to the Performing Arts Metropolis Board of Directors with a term ending February eighteen, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Lebedz, second by Trustee Baldino. Uh, we do have a request for, well, any comments from the board, first of all? Do have a request for a comment from the audience, Mr. Moons. Hold on one second, Alona.
Thank you, President Hayes. I appreciate that. From a from a resident's viewpoint, where it's alarming here on some of the things I've noticed about impact is there is no shortage of publicly available accounts of discrimination, harassment, abuse, and unsafe work conditions at the Metropolis Performing Arts Center or IMPAC. And these accusations are coming from employees and actors alike. And allegedly it started as late as early as twenty fifteen and has continued until at least twenty twenty-one and probably even longer. And apparently now there's also, this includes two existing lawsuits today by an ex-employee as plaintiff and the IMPAC as defendant. So this raises troubling accounts to me as as a as a resident. First, have these toxic work conditions been fixed over there? I do have some renewed hope, a lot of renewed hope in the current IMPAC board to hopefully do the job this time that the obviously the old IMPAC board did not do. Unfortunately, I can't tell if this is just another Charlie Brown in the football. We've seen this before. Second, how much is the village liable for these legal fees and potential settlement costs that may arise from these two current lawsuits that maybe go beyond our three hundred thousand dollar annual subsidy that we give every year to IMPAC? And finally, you know, where was the accountability and oversight and has this been fixed? Of the old IMPAC board and that that allowed this behavior to continue for so long in the village board? Who is accountable? Who is watching this? Who was the watchdog in this? Now, I understand, you know, now I understand why the public was never invited to IMPAC board meetings. I can see that now. Although it's still my opinion that IMPAC and the village board encourage the public to attend their board meetings. And I think that may provide the oversight and transparency that's necessary for the safety of our staff that works over there and for any visiting actors. So President Hayes, I hopefully look forward to you for your reassur- reassur- reassurance on this matter. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Moons. Let me just say I have the utmost confidence in, uh, the new president of the IMPAC board, Jill Geimer, and the new, uh, members of the Board of Directors, especially the village appointees, which Alona is going to be our newest village appointee in, uh, ensuring that the Metropolis remains a successful concern, a private concern that, uh, has been very beneficial to this village in many, many different ways. And so again, I have the utmost confidence in the new board that, uh, they're going to continue to make this a going uh, successful concern for the next twenty years. Uh, it's already been in operation for more than twenty years. And I'm very much looking forward to Mary Poppins on March first. My me and my family are going there. Just a few, uh, tickets still available. So if you want to go see Mary Poppins, you're encouraged to buy tickets soon. Uh, but, um, the Metropolis has been a very successful operation. We're very proud to have it in our community. And again, I have the utmost confidence in the board that, uh, they're going to take it in the right direction. So with that, Alona, why don't you come forward? And we won't be swearing you in, but I just wanted to introduce you to the public. Uh, our meetings are televised and so, um, we just wanted to make sure that they attach a face with a name. And, uh, we wish you many years of, well, three years at least of great success as a member of the Metropolis Board of Directors and especially as one of our village appointees to that board. And so we wish you good luck in your, uh, new role. And, uh, just what do you have to say, uh, as you begin this journey?
Well, thank you very much. I'm so looking forward to it. I've already had a quick little meeting in the back with with Jill and Sue. And, um, I'm looking forward to serving and and keeping the Metropolis up to the standards and bring it up even higher if we can.
Great. Well, thank you very much and, uh, good luck to all of you, uh, again at the board.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And sorry to make you wait. All right. All right, we have one other.
Mayor, you do need to.
We didn't vote. Thank you. But we, see, that's why you, that's why you're here.
I appreciate it. Glad glad to help.
We do have a motion in a second, uh, to, uh, approve the appointment of Alona House. All all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, now you're official. All right. We have one other new business item and that's the Icon Studio to be located at thirty-three seventy-five North Arlington Heights Road, units A, B, G, and H. This is an amendment, uh, proposed amendment to the PUD ordinance and, uh, for, uh, various variations. And so petitioners present, just, uh, introduce yourselves and tell us what you're looking to do here.
Uh, my name is Artemi. I'm founder of Icon Studio. So this is my general contractor, Peter. And, uh, we we just tried to open the our beautiful studio in the Arlington Heights so to provide the, uh, beauty services, uh, haircut, haircuts and manicure, pedicure, facial services and, uh, for for many people who live in Arlington Heights.
Okay. Anything further from you?
I'm sorry?
Anything further from you right now?
Uh, no.
Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to staff. Michael?
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor and trustees. So the, uh, PUD amendment is, uh, proposed at three three seven five, uh, North Arlington Heights Road with which is in the, uh, development located at three 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 five to three three eight five. Um, it's part of a larger planned unit development, which also includes one building to the north at three three nine five. Uh, as you mentioned, they're they're leasing, uh, four of the suites, A, B, G, and H, which, uh, they are, um, now converting over to a beauty salon. It's, uh, located in the M one research development, uh, district, which does not allow, uh, for this type of a commercial use. Therefore, the existing PUD needs to be amended to allow, uh, that lane use variation. Um, there was also a previous board action in December uh, that allowed for a precedent rich declaration for the applicant to apply for permits. That was based on the Plan Commission providing a positive recommendation, which they did, uh, in January. There was also discretion from the village manager to, uh, extend from the February fourth deadline that they had to get all of their approvals. Uh, we were working with the property owner on some of the landscape comments, which you'll see later have been modified uh, since the Plan Commission recommendation. So this is the area of the location, uh, in question. You'll see the arrow pointing to the main building in the center, which is where the studio will be located. The building with the little bit darker roof on the north is actually the three three nine five is a separate property uh, from the existing property owner, which owns the rest of the office suites. Uh, but it all is within the same planned unit development. Uh, the business operation, uh, can be seen here in the floor plan. There's approximately, uh, twenty-five hundred square feet that'll be converted to the salon. Uh, there'll be fourteen employees that'll be using for facial rooms, a nail salon, a hair salon, and a makeup counter. Uh, their proposed operations are Monday to Friday, nine to seven, and Saturday, eight to six. Um, this is the the main crux of the lane use variation is to allow this type of use on this site. Uh, the main issue that staff worked with the petitioner on is the site parking. Uh, you could see here the entire site is ringed by various parking lots, uh, that have been developed uh, that were installed when it was first developed and has not changed throughout the course of the PUD amendments over time. Uh, the way that the staff determined the parking requirements is we update, um, the tenant uses for each of the spaces in development and calculate the parking requirement based on those land uses. Uh, in total, the existing and proposed use would require two hundred sixty-eight spaces under our code. You could see how many uses are in this site currently. Uh, the three colors that you see delineate the different types of lane uses, which, um, have different rates of parking. Just to kind of hone in on what we're looking at, there's a total of seventy-three thousand, uh, a little over seventy-three thousand square feet of space in the units. And, uh, we considered the, uh, five thousand two hundred twenty-eight square feet of commercial space as potentially medical space in the future. One of the additional requests that we received from the owner of the site through the petitioner was to have flexibility to convert those sites over to medical, which is, uh, just highly marketable right now in many of these office spaces, especially in these M one research districts. Uh, so by tabulating those commercial spaces as potential medical office space, actually raised the total, uh, requirement to two hundred seventy-three spaces. That's why the, uh, very, the parking variation request you received is two hundred seventy-three to the existing two hundred thirty-eight spaces, which which the staff supports. Um, so the other side of the equation is the parking demand. We assume the the vacant buildings in the space would be utilized according to the village code. Um, and then the non-general office spaces I described would be used as medical office space. Uh, we added that to the existing use, which was presented over a three-day parking study done by the petitioner. And it still fell, um, well below, um, I think it's below thirty-six percent of utilization of the parking on site. So staff was very comfortable with the parking variation at this time. It looks like the site is is well parked. There wouldn't be any issue in converting the commercial use, uh, in the petition or the possible flexibility of that, um, uh, of that space to medical, uh, in the future. So at this point, um, the Plan Commission approved with a five oh vote um, for the recommendation of the, uh, PUD amendment along with the variations for the land use and the parking. Since we met with the Plan Commission, staff has worked with the owner of the property on some of the landscape conditions. You can see they've been modified at this point, uh, to simplify it, um, based on, uh, the impact of what the petitioner has proposed. Uh, we're continuing to work with the property owner as they're looking at potential future PUD amendments and more flexibility in their space. And that's when we'll look at the space as a whole and possibly some more comprehensive landscape, uh, improvements. With that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Before I open it up for questions, let me just tell, uh, Lizbeth and Pedro, your item was approved. So you can you can leave. Thank you. All right, now, questions or comments on the board? I think pretty straightforward.
Mary.
Go ahead, Trustee Dunnington.
Thank you. Uh, could you show the picture again of the actual, um, space of the that, yeah, this one's great. When the, um, when you're in the property, where is the entrance to the salon? Is are you facing the water or are you facing? Okay.
Uh, the water.
Your face, that's the entrance?
Uh, yes, we have the second entrance from the, we can use the like both entrances, actually.
Okay, so customers will use both entrances? Okay, so customers will parking both in the north and the south?
Yeah, for, uh, like for facial rooms, it's going to be, uh, customers came like on a backside.
Okay.
From the salon side, uh, they came from the from the the lakeside.
Okay. And I did notice that for the parking, some of the parking areas are blocked off by salt and, you know, some trucks to, you know, for snow removal and stuff. Do we include that when we're looking at our parking numbers?
As far as that there wouldn't be available?
Yeah.
Um, we do not look at that. If well, if we if we know that that condition exists, we'll ask them to make sure that those spots are available. So that is something we can follow up with the property owner on. But on. But I will say, because their, their utilization of the site is so low at this point, it wouldn't be a huge concern, but we would want to make sure that those things are taken care of properly.
Okay.
We don't usually let people have maintenance vehicles and things of that nature just laying around the site.
Okay. Because right now in that, the top portion, there's cement blocks, and then I think it's salt that's stored there, and then some vehicles for spreading that salt and removing the snow that are taking up quite a few parking spots.
We'll, we'll work with the landowner to make sure that those things are addressed.
Okay, thank you.
The landlord's doing pretty good job on this winter, so I'll check. Yeah, the, the salt is everywhere, so it's fine.
Good.
There is never a problem with the parking.
Okay.
So you can see it on the overview pictures, it's a during-the-day picture, and we observed parking spots for three days, and we're doing constructions there for more than a month now, and there's never problems.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Bertucci?
John or Randy, the, my question is, is I'm hearing a couple times now about the landlord, and I think sometimes when we have these, the property owner is at least present or whatever. So has somebody gotten some kind of, something from the, the property owner that says that they will do what they're supposed to do?
In terms of the petition that's in front of us?
Correct.
Yes, so we've worked very closely with the property owner, the broker for the site, and actually the second property owner that's within the planned unit development. They've provided affidavits from them, but we've also worked directly with the owner on this to ensure that, that the petition is okay with them, and they've reviewed all the conditions and okay them as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board? Seeing none? What's the will of the board? Do you have a motion? Trustee Lebedz?
Okay, I'll do it. Not that there was going to be any problem. When I, when you first, when I first opened my board packet for tonight's meeting, I thought, Icon Studio, we just saw you guys. And then I read it, it's, oh, yes, it was the proceed at your own risk meeting.
Yeah.
So I will move to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents approving the requested relief or consideration at a future board meeting for DC number 24-014 and amendment to planned unit development ordinances 79-166, 80-105, 81-028, 81-035, and 19-002, and the following variations from chapter 28 of the municipal code, which is a land use variation to allow a barber, beauty salon in the M1 District, research development, and light manufacturing district, and a variation to chapter 28, section 10.4. Dash two, schedule of parking requirements to reduce the required off-street parking from 273 to 238 spaces, and subject to, including the conditions as listed on the motion recommended by the Plan Commission, however, as amended by the Staff Development Committee.
Second.
A thumbs up from the village attorney. So good to go. Motion by Trustee Lebedz, second by Trustee Baldino. Any questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, congratulations. When do you hope to open?
Yeah, thank you so much. 100% installed like a trash can for batteries to our customers came.
When do you hope to open?
Probably in the next month, maybe. Yes.
All right, good luck to you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
And Mayor, we will endeavor to have this ordinance on your agenda in, is it two weeks? Two weeks.
Okay.
That's a goal.
Thank you. There is no other new business. Is there anything from the village manager?
Nothing to see there.
Anything from the board under petitions and communications? Seeing none, thank you all for attending. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
By Trustee Baldino, second by Trustee Lebedz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Again, thank you all for joining us tonight.